And welcome to the August 27th meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. I have minutes from the February 26th meeting. I would move for their approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We go on, we continue the public hearing for the hospice on 542 Violet Avenue. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
How are you? For the record, would you state your name?
Michael Kaminski.
Mr. Kaminski, it's good to see you again.
Same here.
We have a variance, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know. Yeah. I know how you feel. You have asked for a variance to expand the, I'm sorry?
You gotta open the public.
I do. I do have to open the public hearing. But let me explain what we're talking about and then I'm gonna open the public hearing. We have a request for a variance to increase the square footage, the scale of the square footage from 30,000 to 33,406 feet to add 21 additional parking spaces. I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, yes, Ms. Moss?
I'm not sure whether you received the letter earlier this week, so this is gonna be.
Thank you. Have you had an opportunity to see that, Mr. Kaminski?
No. This is the first time I've seen it.
Okay. This is a letter from the engineer, Mr. Lern, describing some of the issues that they see at this point. And I think what's, there is obviously some differences in terms of the capacity, the capacity of your wet and dry ponds and how they're functioning. And I think this document lays out some questions there. I guess what I would encourage you to read that and perhaps share that certainly, well, it went to Mr. Berger. So Mr. Berger, I think, has seen that. Now, this is relative, this came out today, so he hasn't had a chance to review that. What?
I emailed him to see if he had received a report. I haven't heard back from him, so I'm assuming he didn't. But I don't know.
Okay. I guess the question before this committee is, the issue here of water management on the property in light of the variance that you're requesting, will the variance have any impact on that? And if, is the problem of water flow as being interpreted both by the town and by yourselves, is there some agreement in terms of where that is, how much of a problem it is, and are there solutions for that? Which is really outside the purview of our committee. But I think what we're looking to is, if we make the, when we make the decision, and we are anxious to make the decision of moving ahead, will that decision have a negative impact on water management there? And that hasn't been answered at this point to us in terms of where the water management is now, is it a problem or not, and what are the solutions? Again, that's out of our purview. And so I'm afraid that we are, we're sitting here in a holding pattern. It's not a comfortable one. We recognize very much the need you have for additional parking, the reason for it, the work that you're doing there at the hospice center. We applaud that, both for what you've done and what you're doing. And so we are very anxious to move ahead. I think our hands are tied at this point until this appears to be resolved. And let me stop there, because I'm babbling now. Any thoughts from you, sir, or any other?
No.
Okay. Okay. Then I would move that we.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My suggestion is because there is a continuing conversation between the engineers, that this board adjourn out the public hearing to a date certain, a couple of months out. That way, you're not coming back every month and potentially getting your escrow charged for this while they work this out. And hopefully, the engineers will communicate to us when there's been a resolution to this. My suggestion would be to October, potentially. That gives two months.
Well, I don't, I don't mind coming back next month. I mean, it.
I don't mind coming back next month either.
Okay.
Okay. I just want you to be aware that if it's not resolved, you're still getting charged for the time at the meetings.
Who's still getting charged?
Your escrow account.
I'm sorry. Charged for what?
For my time.
Oh, I didn't realize I was being charged for your time.
Yes, yes. So.
The good news is.
I just want you to make you aware of that, so, because if nothing's gonna be moving forward in the next month, it may be worthwhile to keep that money in your escrow and adjourn this out an additional month.
She, just one comment. Her rates are very reasonable. Mine are free, so we'd be happy to see you next time. But let's continue, I would move that we continue the public hearing to September 24th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. If we can be of any assistance in terms of this, again, our expertise is not in terms of the capacity. I would, I think this starts finally to outline what I, what may be an issue, but.
Have you read it?
I have.
Oh, okay. Because I haven't.
Right.
I'm assuming it says that Joe Berger is wrong and they've gotta get back together.
It's really dealing with the capacity of, of the capacity of your wet.
I understand. And that's what Joe Berger's report addressed.
Right.
So obviously, there, there's a contention that Joe's wrong.
And my, my hope is that the parties can come together and have some agreement, or somebody would do that. I would, I would hope.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you find that nothing's changed come September.
Yeah.
Maybe you wanna talk to the zoning clerk here and pull yourself off the agenda, just so you're not getting charged for nothing to happen.
I'm gonna assume that you're, you have reasonable charges. I'm not really worried about that. I'm real, I'm more worried about whether or not they're ever gonna get together.
Yeah.
It's more likely that there's not gonna be an agreement between the two.
Somehow, I think we, yeah, this is frustration of this committee as well. And I think, why can't the two parties sit down and talk and come to some understanding? Not only what the problem is, but what possible solutions may be. And, and.
Yeah.
Again.
I understand.
We have a lot, we have a lot of ideas, but that's not our purview. But we're here to listen and we're here, if you have some concerns that you'd like to bring to the committee, we welcome that.
You just heard them.
I know. I know. I know.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Let us move on. A new public hearing for Tyrone's at 6 Knowles Road, Poughkeepsie. This is asking for a variance of a front yard setback of 23 feet, where 50 is required for the existing detached garage associated with an existing family dwelling. Madam Chairman, has the public notice been published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on August 20th, 2025.
Okay. I would move then to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Welcome. How are you?
Good evening.
Good. Tell us about what you're looking for here.
So, my name is Patty Holman. I am a licensed Realtor. And my client is Raymond Tyrone.
Mm-hmm.
And I am his sales, sales agent. So, the seller's agent. So, when I, usually when I have a homeowner who wants to sell his property, I do my due diligence and make sure that what they're representing is, you know, in public record the same.
Right.
So, we found that the garage that he had recently built was not on public record. So, I started the process back in May to make sure that we have a CO on this. And it's already built. The contractor said that he had done all the proper paperwork in permitting the garage. The homeowner had paid him. He believed him. He paid him for everything. And he didn't. He didn't pull any permits, nothing.
So, the contractor didn't pull any permits?
Correct.
All right.
So, but he told the homeowner he did. So, here we have a contract of sale dated June, and we've been trying to sell, you know, trying to clear this up and close on the property.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Perkins?
Well, we went by there. It looks similar to other homes in the area. It is centered from front to back, pretty much. It's not, you know, too close to Tyrone. I mean, it would need a variance if you were gonna build it today. So, it is built.
Okay.
I was concerned that we have a contractor that's building things without going to the building department.
Correct.
What, is, is that outside the town's purview? In other words, would the homeowner be the person that would have to?
The homeowner is the responsible party.
Yeah.
The homeowner is the responsible person.
Okay.
It's not the first time.
No, it happens all the time in my sales.
The contractor doesn't get a permit.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Other questions? No? April?
No.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the public?
No.
Okay. Then let me, if there are questions from the public, I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think we have a resolution.
Yep, we do. Resolution 202512Z. Whereas the applicant, Patricia Holman, on behalf of the property owner, Raymond Tyrone, has submitted an application for an area variance to change the front yard setback to legalize an existing detached garage, the project, at property located at 6 Knowles Road, Poughkeepsie, New York 12601, in the town of Hyde Park, identified as tax parcel number 616303354403, in the Green Belt Zoning District, which is the site. And whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law section 108-5.15, bulk regulations, to change the minimum front yard setback from 50 feet to 23 feet for a existing single-story detached garage associated with a single-family dwelling. That's the requested variance. Whereas pursuit to 6 New York CRR 617-5C17, granting of the area variance for single-family, two-family, and three-family residents is a type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is not subject to review under the act. Whereas duly noted, public hearing was held August 27th, 2025, during a duly noticed meet, meeting, during which all those who wished to speak were heard. And whereas the applicable standards for the considering of the area variance are set forth in the town law section 267-B and Hyde Park zoning law section 108-3316B2, which require the board to take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the general neighborhood or community by such grant. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with zoning 267-B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Design for the applicant's garage enhances the aesthetic appeal of the property. The garage will continue to enhance both the appearance and value of the property. The existing location of the garage makes sense for the current and new property owners. The garage is similar to other garages in the neighborhood and would provide safe storage of family needs, a workshop, and car storage. The benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible to the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance, or ripping it down and rebuilding it after an area variance.
Yeah, okay.
The variance is necessary because the site is already developed. The location of the most feasible, is the most feasible as it is located at the end of the existing driveway. Other locations would be infeasible without creating a new driveway. The requested variance may be considered numerically substantial. The variance will change the permitted front yard setback from 50 feet to 23 feet, which is a decrease of more than 50% for the accessory garage. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect on, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the general neighborhood or district. Decreasing the front yard setback requirement to lower a variance of 23 feet so detached garage can continue to exist will not have a negative impact on the physical or environmental conditions. The garage is constructed in an area already disturbed by construction. The difficulties are self-created. The property was purchased subject to the current zoning. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year. I think it'll happen. And payment of all fees and escrow.
Mr. Perkins has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Ms. Daly.
No.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes. Go sell the house.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and consideration.
A comment on this lot, in looking at it, it's, it's at maximum 90, 99 feet deep, probably never should've been built on in the first place in terms of that, because the house built is clearly too close to the, to the front of the lot.
Probably built before zoning.
Yeah, the house was built in 1945.
Okay. That explains it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is Mr. Teteau, is he in Florida? Is that what it was?
He is.
He's staying there?
Yeah. He bought a house in Florida.
Good luck on that.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is, second one is the Squida on 18 Bendview Road. The variance requested here is to allow a side yard setback of six feet, where 20 is required, and a front yard setback of 35, where 50 feet is required, for the construction of an expanded deck attached to an existing family dwelling. Madam Secretary, has the public hearing, has the notice been published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on August 20th, 2025.
Okay. I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Welcome.
Hi.
How are you?
Fine, how are you?
Good. You wanna tell us, first of all, your name?
Elizabeth Masquita, resident and owner of 18 Bendview Road, Hyde Park.
Good to see you and thank you for hosting our brief site visit to your.
Thank you for coming.
Can you explain a little bit about what you're trying to do?
I'm trying, there's a, just a temporary deck off my back door, and I'm trying to extend that deck, flat, a flat deck off my back door of my house.
Okay.
And I'm trying to avoid my septic tank and septic pump and propane tanks.
Okay. So, this location seems to be about the only place that you can put it. Now, why so close to the, your, your side one is six feet, I think, and what's, what's to that side?
It's all woods. I'm at the dead end. I'm at a dead-end road, so there's three sides of all woods around my house. One neighbor over here that will only see probably the end of the deck.
Okay.
From his deck, his high deck.
Okay.
And the, this other side is where I'm six feet from the, my property line.
Right.
Is all woods.
All woods.
Somebody down on Holt Road, and it's like a cliff, so he's not building there.
Okay. All right. So, nobody's sitting right there on that side?
No. It's a, it's a big, it's kinda where the cell tower, it's the cell tower woods, but the side of it.
Right.
And it's a cliff down to Holt Road.
Your neighbor down there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, question on the, on the front setback. This is kinda weird, because you're putting the, this deck on the back of the house, and yet you're asking for a variance to the front of the house.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of property.
Can you explain that?
Um, I, my house sits just a little bit off the road, and I don't have a lot of property. I think it's .3 acres. So, from the, where the deck starts in the back to the road is not that far. So, but I am on the dead end.
Right.
So, there is nobody next door to me, and the house across the street can't even see my backyard.
Right.
And so, all the people across the street can't even see where my back door is, actually.
So, in fact, the house is probably too close to the front property line as it was built originally.
Right. I understand that it was moved there from Veronzano Road in Poughkeepsie, was moved there and placed there by the original owner.
Prior to zoning.
Prior to zoning, yeah, I'm sure. How old is the house, do you know?
Um, I bought it as a flip in 2020. I don't know how old it is, because they added on.
Probably older than dirt.
Yeah.
Probably. Okay.
Yeah.
Questions? Ms. Daly, any questions?
No questions, a slight comment. I think the variance is maybe a little bit more than requested, but that's, of course, against the drop-off.
Right.
It's just, just making a note of that.
Yeah.
I didn't actually fully calculate it, but.
Okay.
It's just a difference in numbers, it's not substantial.
Paul?
Anything? No.
We notified all the neighbors?
Yes.
And nobody complained?
No.
Anybody from public? Nobody yelling? Okay. All right. Any other, any other information that we should know about this?
Not that I know of.
Okay. All right. Then I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think we do have a resolution here. Resolution to grant the area variance for Elizabeth Masquita, 18 Bendview Road, Hyde Park, 12538, dated August 27th of this year, to, resolution 2025-13Z. Whereas the applicant, Elizabeth Masquita, has submitted an application for area variance to construct a deck attached to a single-family dwelling at a property located at 18 Bendview Road, Hyde Park, identified as tax parcel 6163025049960000, in the neighborhood zoning district. And whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law section 108.5.15 to permit a reduction in the side yard setback from 20 to 6 feet, and a reduction in the front yard setback from 50 to 35 feet. And whereas pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C17, the granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family variance is a type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is not subject to review under the act. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law of Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the nearby properties. The new expanded deck will be located on the west and north side of the house with no exposure to the front of the property, so there will be minimal visual impact in the neighborhood. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the, an area variance. This deck location allows for access to and from the house through an existing door, as well as avoiding any interference with the existing systems. The requested variances are substantial. The side yard setback is a 70% reduction, and the front yard setback is a 30% reduction. The original house was constructed within the setback. The deck is in the rear of the house while still remaining within the setback boundaries. Four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The new deck will not impact the water flow and drainage on the property. Number five, the difficulties are self-created, however, the proposed location of the deck is most logical, considering the location of the septic system and other limitations. Be it further resolved that the board hereby grants the requested variance, subject to the following conditions. One, pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the deck date of issuance, otherwise this variance is revoked. And two, payment of all fees and escrow. I have moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you please poll the board?
Yes. Ms. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McNary.
Yes. Congratulations. Win as the party.
Thank you. Kinda fills it now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hopefully before winter. Thank you so much. I appreciate all your time.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys.
All right. And now, we have come to an exciting part of this meeting tonight. The, no, don't wanna start there. 33 Cross Road, South Cross Road in Stotzburg. The Hildenbrand, number 2025-14, is requesting allowing animal husbandry to be conducted as close as 93 feet from a residence on another lot, whereas 250 feet is required from a section 108-43B to allow enclosed storage of manure as close as 50 feet to a well as, as close as 93 feet to a neighboring residence, whereas 200 feet is required. Welcome, and I see we have a presentation. Would you give us your names, please?
I'm Brad Hildenbrand.
I'm Amira Aga.
I'm Kalandra Mayo.
I'm Giana L.
Welcome.
Hi.
Tell us about your project.
All right. So, we got these chickens when they were babies, roughly January, February time. Unbeknownst to us, we didn't check the town code, that we needed an approval for this project. However, here we are today, seeking a variance, because we do not meet the backyard setbacks. And we chose to call our chicken family Saving Private Chicken.
How many chickens do you have?
Five.
Five.
Could you please just all speak into the microphones, please? Thank you.
Sure. So, Amira is going to address you guys on our chickens. She's our family chicken wrangler.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amira, and I'm.
You have to speak, bring in the microphone.
You guys speak up on you guys.
Slow and loud.
And I'm grateful for the chance to speak with you today. As a 15-year-old with special needs, life can sometimes feel challenging and lonely, but my chickens have become more than pets. They are my friends and my teachers. Having chickens have given me a sense of responsibility and purpose. Every day, I wake up knowing that they rely on me for food and water and care. This routine helps me stay focused and gives me a reason to start each day with a positive mindset. It's a responsibility that I cherish, because it makes me feel important and needed. My chickens also provide me with companionship. They don't judge me or make fun of me. Instead, they offer comfort with their gentle clucks and curious nature. Spending time with them helps me feel calm and happy, especially when things get overwhelming. Through caring for my chickens, I've learned value, valuable lessons in empathy and patience. I've seen how small actions can make a big difference in their lives, such as taking an interest in their diets, growing their vegetables that they, that will directly impact their health and well-being by giving them nutrients they need to produce enriched eggs for our family. And this understanding extends to how I interact with people, too. These experiences have helped me grow as a person and have taught me to appreciate the simple joys in life. Keeping my chickens is not just about having pets. It's about maintaining a connection that enriches my life every day. They inspire me to be responsible, compassionate, and resilient, which is why I joined the American Poultry Association and named it Saving Private Chicken. To learn more about the in-depth history of poultry in America and locally, I would like to bring my chickens into the community to our local elementary school. Uh, elementary school to help promote agriculture in our local, for each program which have applied, which I have applied for in waiting acceptance, teaching young, teaching young children that agriculture will help our community in the long run. I believe these lessons are important for anyone, but especially for someone who faces unique challenges. I hope you consider how much my chickens mean to me and how they positively impact my life. Thank you for listening to my story and understanding why keeping my chickens is so important to me.
Excellent, excellent story and an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
You have five?
Yes.
Are they all chickens?
They're hens.
Hens, no roosters?
So, we did have a rooster in the beginning, which caused the neighbor to complain.
They forgot sex. We didn't know until they got older.
We got rid of him.
Yes, we found him a home, took a little time.
Are they in a, uh, okay, is he fenced out, fenced in, or they kinda roam?
Yes, fenced in area.
Um, we use recycled pallets, and we came up with our own design, and we built our own coop out of recycled material.
So, they go, but they're not, they're not in the coop, like, 24 hours, right?
They have a small run that is fenced in.
Please, use the microphone.
They have a small run that is fenced in with a door to the coop that they can go in and out of as they please.
And what do you do with the waste?
Um, it gets...
Bagged and thrown out.
It gets bagged and thrown out.
Okay. And I'm assuming that you found out that you didn't meet the town code because the neighbor complained, or?
Correct. We, um, attempted to buy the lot that was next door to us, um...
The one that they're building a house on now?
The one that they're building a house on now. Um, we attempted to buy that. Um, the new owner has had lots of issues with us.
Regarding the chickens, or other?
Um, well, he was not the one that reported it. The person that he bought the property from was the person that reported our chickens.
Does the new owner have an issue with the chickens?
Um, he does, because he has his own issues with building the house, with the property and the engineer. Um, he leveled his property up, and now the runoff is coming down into our house that was never there before. So, he has made threats via text message to my partner that, um, if we tattle on him to you guys, he will try to get our chickens evicted.
Okay.
Not a friendly neighbor.
No.
I, I have a couple of concerns. One is that you are very close, uh, to, to, you know, to the wells, to the other people's lots.
Our, the back of our property has woods in between. Um, there is a fence all the way in the back to the property behind us. There is woods to, if you're looking out my back door, to the left. And there was trees and stuff while, when the coop was built, before the new owner came, who then took down the entire tree line on the property, so that he could build his house.
So, my, my question is, and our illustrious attorney has been telling me that maybe it won't work, but uh, you have a retaining wall along your driveway. Is that about, what, five, six feet tall?
Um, no, it's probably three and a half to four, max.
Oh, okay. It looked taller when I went by.
Yeah, we both looked at it.
Along that, there is some green space, uh, going along the driveway?
Um, one side belongs to us, the others, there is only about a foot. Which side? One side is our neighbor's, we don't have any part of that.
But, right against the, the wall.
You have a stone wall there.
Yes.
Right, against the wall, that would give you all the distances that you need.
I wouldn't be able to get up my driveway with my cars.
Oh, yeah, you would. Come here, look.
So, one thing that's not clear to me is what the distance of the chicken coop is from the well of this property.
Your driveway, your property goes over to here.
Fifty feet.
It must want closer. Am I looking at the wrong things here?
If you, but, it was three feet, you could go, you could go, you know, not eight feet or whatever. As long as you put a little blockade here, that would not be visible from, uh, the street. And similar to, like, people don't want garbage cans on the, visible from the street, you put up a little block, I don't know if that's acceptable or not. You'd still have to get rid of the, uh, stuff, I don't know.
Isn't that too close to, isn't the septic right there? On the other side?
The wells, uh...
I'm not sure if I agree, because, again, what's the position of the well on this property in relation to the chicken coop? I think it's practically sitting on top of it.
Your, your well right now is just at the back of your driveway, looks like, or your garage?
Behind the garage, yeah, it's about 50 feet from the chicken.
Right.
And they put a little barrier here, like people do for their garbage cans.
Sorry, you could grab one of the handheld ones, that's all those words.
Much better, much better.
Is it within range?
So, it's 50 feet from your well.
Correct.
Yes.
Uh, it's 93 feet from the, your neighbor on your west side.
Uh, I'm sorry, how'd you get the 50 feet from your well?
From the well to my coop is 50 feet.
Could you show me on a map, because the maps I'm showing is showing that they're practically...
There's a drawing.
Yeah, and it looks to me like they're sitting on top of each, sitting on top of it. It's a very close proximity.
Well, there's 50, 50 feet between them. Do you know where the, where the well is for the new house that's being built to the east of you? Did they just, did they just drill a well?
Yeah, they just did.
They did just drill a well, yeah.
And that seems to be in the front?
No, it's in the back.
It's in the back. He put it all, he put it pretty close to the, um, the property line in the rear.
To which property line? Which side? East or the west? Yours?
Ours. It's on the...
Okay, now, we, that's not marked.
We don't know what that is.
We don't know where that is, okay. I know his septic is in front.
Correct.
Yes.
Is your septic in front?
Correct.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so septic, septic. And, the house to your east...
Right, if that's an 86 draw, that's not a 50.
Okay, so you're 93 feet from the well, so his, his septic must also be in the front.
Maybe Rose is?
I think it's 90 feet, 93 feet from the residence, the neighboring residence.
Yeah.
Not the well.
Right.
Oh, is that the residence?
I don't think we know where the neighbor's well is.
No.
Okay. I think one of the things that, that we need to get a little more information on, and to do that as we, as we start going to a public hearing, is, um, exactly where the different wells are and the, and the extension there. I mean, the fact is that you're right on top of your well, um, is somewhat concerning here.
Isn't it, isn't it 50 feet from a well?
Right, but the town code requires 250 feet, not 250.
From a well?
Requirement is, yeah.
From a well.
So, um, some of the members were talking about, uh, a site visit.
Yeah. Yeah.
We like to see chickens.
We were gonna bring one with us.
How many eggs are you getting?
Um, right now, about, what would you say, about 68 a day, about six to eight a day. Um, I work at a local infusion center that houses cancer patients, so we also grow our own vegetables that feed our chickens, so all of the excess eggs and, um, vegetables that we've been having I've been bringing into the infusion center for my patients.
Nice.
That's very nice.
Yeah, yeah. But I think clearly, uh, is there anything? We need to identify the, the well, uh, to the new house that's being built, just exactly where that is, and what that distance is. And is there, I think also considering, is there any other location that you could put the, I'm not sure where you could put the, uh, the coop? The front, the idea there, I'm not sure if, that...
The only problem with that is, we own, um, an RV, a trailer. To be able to back that up, it, we, it's very close. We have a very small amount of space.
Right.
Um, we did have our trailer on the side of our house, but due to the new neighbor, which we were also threatened about, is that he did not want to ruin our, it, so we should move it, so it's now had to be moved into the driveway, which that's what I would see to be a problem with putting the coop in the front, that if we back the trailer up into our driveway, it would end up hitting the coop, and it would scare the life out of the chickens every time we did it, which would be every weekend.
The board should weigh the wisdom of setting a precedent of putting chicken coops in the front yard.
Yeah, we didn't think the rest of the neighbors would want to see that.
Okay, okay. Other questions that the board, that we need to sort of address as we go to the next step?
No questions, but I think a site visit could help us out a little bit.
Yeah, we would love to have you guys come meet them. They're very friendly. We've had them since they were babies.
Chickens won't bite?
No, they don't. Um, the one, a couple of them maybe will nipple. They don't bite. Um, we bring them inside our home.
No, I love, I love chickens.
Yeah, I think some information that the board would find helpful, uh, before the next meeting would be to identify where the wells are on the neighboring properties.
I don't know that our neighbors would give us that information, currently.
I got a drawing from the Board of Health, distributed it, and it has the well location.
Okay, thank you. Never mind.
And you made some measurements, too, so I think there's, based on that drawing, there's, uh, variances needed with respect to well locations.
Yeah.
For neighbors.
Okay, so we will set up, um, Kathleen will, will get in touch with you, and we'll set up a time when we can come.
Great, we would love that.
Yeah, we would, too. We would, too. Then I would, I would, uh, then like to set a public hearing. I would move that we set a public hearing for the next, excuse me, meeting, which is September 24th.
Second.
Uh, all in, do we have, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, okay. Um, so we will do that, and there'll be a public hearing. Now, at that time, other people will have an opportunity.
We expect it.
And, um, before that, in the interim, we will make a visit to you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. And the presentation was very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it was very informative. Our last issue, um, is the space 2025-15Z, uh, the Sereno property, 4391 Albany Post Road, looking for a side yard setback of one foot, where 10 feet is required for the installation of an exterior air conditioning. Sir, good mor, afternoon, I guess.
Good evening, how are you?
Tell, tell me your name.
I'm Dave Stewart of DS Home Services.
Okay, and tell me what you're, you're trying to do here.
Um, the tenant, or the, uh, property owner has a through-wall, an old AC, uh, through-wall unit. I have some pictures. Um, I should have sent, but I'll leave them with you guys. An old through-wall, just a built-in, um, AC unit. We wanna just take that out, fix the siding, and put a mini-split, high-efficiency heat pump unit to replace that, and, uh, that's it.
The question I would have on that is, location, why on the side? Why can't you, uh, do that in the back? You have some space in the back?
We can, we could put the condenser in the back. The aesthetics are just gonna be better, um, on the side, and also we would have to change the type of unit. The line set, I believe, will be too long to go all the way to the back, um, to have the condenser in the back and the head in the front. And if we had to, so we're gonna still have to connect point A to point B, so there's gonna be line height on the outside, and, um, did we submit any pictures, or have you guys?
Yeah, there's a couple.
I, I think we've got the, we've got, let's see, we've got the one... Okay.
So, we would have to wrap that chimney, if you have pictures of that?
We do not.
You don't, I'm sorry.
Pictures of, of...
I have some, I'm sorry, I didn't...
The chimney's on the north side?
The chimney's on the south side.
Do you have pictures with you now?
I do.
You made one, I'll pass them out while they're talking about it.
Unfortunately, I need to bring them out there.
Dave, are you gonna go to both sides with the condensers?
No, it's just one to one, um, so this is pictures of the existing, and these are just some examples of, um, some of the ones we have.
Dave, just a second. Point, point to me. Where are they gonna go? South side?
This is, um, yeah.
Yeah, south side.
And this right away, right here, there's no vehicle use there. This is the one that would be the vehicle use.
So, probably goes right along the house. So, I, I mean, there's enough space to get a vehicle there? I don't think the intention is a, a through, throughway. Um, there is a chimney that sits right here, and a, and a column, that there's some pictures in here that'll show you.
Yeah.
It'll be far behind the column, and within an inch past the chimney, potentially.
Is there, I mean...
You're talking about putting it...
Right behind the...
Right here. Yeah, okay.
So, here's the, here's the unit, so he's gonna put the...
Probably lying is right along it.
So, it will be narrower than the chimney?
Correct. Uh, well, within an inch, I mean, yeah. I don't wanna go on record saying it'll be narrower if it's with, right in line, but within an inch or two.
Okay.
Can you put those condensers up high enough, so that when, they can't, they can't get anything through there?
No.
Okay.
They're, they're on a stand about this big, right?
They sit off, um, for, for efficiency, they sit 12 inches off the ground.
12, yeah.
Uh, or we could mount it to the wall. Each, each, uh, location gives about four to six inches off the back of the wall.
What do you prefer?
Uh, we usually keep them on stands, uh, that just, uh, you don't hear, they don't rattle as much inside.
Now, that, okay, so, we've got two stories here. Your capacity here, will it, will that cool the whole building, or is it just for the lower?
It's for, it's just for the main area of the first, I mean, it'll really cool the whole area. It will heat most of it. It's not meant for primary heat, but it's, uh, it'll cool. They have a through-wall one, it's all, the only AC they've had in there now, and this'll be twice as efficient.
Yeah, okay, all right. Uh, first floor only, not second floor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'd just like to say that I know that it could change, but the home, the, the owner does own that, that building.
That's their office.
Um, that's the chamber office in there, and then they also own the building that's right next to it. So, you know, the setbacks are for a property they own. I understand that that could...
When they have the property across the street, across Market Street, too, newly owned?
Yeah. Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Oh, across Market, that, they do. It's in the family. I don't think it's them, I think it's, I don't know that.
Okay, all right, good, all right. So, we need to set a public hearing for this. Uh, I would move that we set a public hearing for the next meeting, which is September 24th?
Yes, it is.
Of 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed, okay.
Is there anything else I should bring before, uh, before the meeting?
These are, I think...
Do you want digital copies of them?
It's close enough, we'll probably look.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think, we can go right now if you want.
We can walk.
No, I think this, this will be fine.
And we do also have, I can get a figure, uh, business survey of property, my sure.
They want to see this?
Oh, that's in there, right?
Yeah, that, that's in there. Okay, yeah, so I think we're good. All right. Thank you, sir. We will see you on September 25th.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just while the applicants representative is here, you may want to, uh, refer this to the county.
Refer this to the county?
They're within 500 feet, it's a commercial building, within 500 feet of Route 9.
For, yeah...
239M referral, it's required.
So, any variance within 500 feet?
For commercial.
Commercial, okay, all right. So, we need to refer that to the county? All right, I would move that we refer this to the county, which department?
Uh, County Planning.
I'm sorry?
It's County Planning Department.
County Planning Department for their, uh, review, and, uh, okay, all right.
I missed the first part of that, why did you?
It's a requirement.
Within 500 feet of a state road, nine.
It's a commercial building.
And it's commercial. Oh, boy, sorry about this.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. So, we'll get that going, I'm sorry?
If I can just say, my great-grandmother raised me, and she always said, "No good deed goes unpunished."
That's right.
And this started out as a, uh, I was, I was gonna donate this, because the chamber has the office here, and I'm on the board of the chamber. So, I was just gonna donate it, and I was gonna have it in for our first meeting that I was a part of.
When's the first meeting?
That was two months ago.
Now, he can tell more about zoning.
For, uh, for, for the spring, it's gonna be great.
There you go, okay. Thank you, sir.
Good attitude, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other actions of the board? I think, is there any other business before this board?
No.
No.
No, everybody is sure of that, okay. I would then move for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Man, that was slow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Moss, do you have any comments or thoughts that you'd like to, any...